I'd like to call the this special meeting to order. Entertain a motion to accept the minutes of March twenty first. This is presented. Okay. Anyone?
By one, I both. It will be corrected in the final.
Yes. And then we also have the field trip minutes from this committee only Ken and I were able to attend it.
That can just be noted.
Yeah, so we really can't put a quorum to accept them, but they're technically inland wetlands agency minutes.
This chair, before we go any further, I don't actually think we did a roll call. Let's hear.
Oh, that's probably should for the recording.
Yes. Okay, so we have, everyone can just go around say their name for present.
Yeah.
For all the members.
Charlotte.
Okay.
Vicki Weather.
Miranda Davis.
Ken Feathers.
Tom Harrington.
Sue Harrington.
Jim Marrow.
Michael Seco Staff.
And we have.
Joining us.
Yes.
Chen. Devin.
Okay.
Okay. And Juliana Barrett.
Thank you, Juliana.
Who is our economic director.
Yeah.
Sorry about that, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you for the reminder. Okay, we have some people from Lowdy Drive. And instead of having them comment to us, I is the sense of committee that you invite them to join our discussion of agenda item four one, Lowdy Drive, our solid position.
If they can identify themselves for the for me to write down. Su Chen.
Yeah, S H U K, not C H A N.
C H A M.
A M.
Okay.
D B H A.
Thank you.
Okay. Last week I asked Michael on to go forward to use the procedure for town acquiring.
Yeah.
In that, and it's page twenty five in our packet according to my note, Michael.
Yeah, we have that on here.
Yeah, is the guidelines.
Yeah.
And since you're proposing the town acquiring the property, can you articulate using those guidelines? What the advantage of the town is of acquiring the property?
I haven't seen the going on.
Just got the email this morning. We just heard about the meeting this morning.
Jim, you know what? I think we usually use our open space evaluation criteria in the plan, so I think.
Yeah, that's what I've seen.
Oh, okay. Yeah, in the packet is.
Appendix pay.
Open space.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, in taking.
Oh. The thing is.
Keep in mind that it already has a conservation easement.
Yes.
Yeah.
Really, really. Yeah. Yeah. Overheating there, so we have.
Okay, I'm getting about three conversations here.
We have. No, what is saying that when we when we purchase the house in Lowdy Drive and then there was a bylaw saying that if we own one is the piece of land and the only way that we can do it is donate it to the town. And I think that time I don't know if the town have talked to those owner of the land for the developer. Yeah. Well. Yeah, well, it's just significant red lips. I know that because it goes down into the area where they tried to Larry Ross.
Yeah. Yeah, that's why the conservation. That, so that's already protected.
So I just I've talked with the resident.
Yes, please.
So the residents contacted the town probably, I don't know, two months ago.
Right, I just emailed.
It's been emailed and they 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 have parcel of land that it's in a neighborhood association. It has the conservation easement. It was part of the subdivision approval. It is adjacent to see, but we wrote our GIS isn't really working, so.
For whatever reason, it's not working.
Yeah, but it's basically surrounded by land with. Um, but there is right. So what they would like to do is donate it to the town. It already has a conservation easement. In order to do that, what's going to be required is there will have to be a legal mechanism. There'll have to be a subdivision modification and all the neighbors will need to approve of this subdivision modification. So there's a couple ways to go. The conservation easement will remain on this property or it, I think it probably should remain, but either the town can accept this or the town can decline it. And then, you know, you still have the conservation easement, but I think, you know, obviously, the town's going to want to go ahead and walk this property. It is my understanding from speaking with the neighbors, it is quite overgrown. And it would be a parcel that's kind of in the middle of not a lot of other accessible land. So if we go.
We have it right here.
Yeah.
So this is the parcel at the back of Lowdy Drive. It borders lots twenty eight and twenty seven is accessed through this small straight parcel here goes into the back. Now, it's my understanding that at the time there was a playground at one point located on this parcel that was discontinued. At this point, it has not been maintained as a local space. It has overgrown. I don't know if we've done an evaluation of what kinds of plant growth are on there, but invasives are likely. This is continuous now. Forgive me, our GIS is not working right now. Must be done for maintenance. This parcel is continuous with several other pieces of dedicated open space that are preserved located to the east.
With conservation.
So it's part of a larger easement matrix, but those are all privately held, at least as far as I know.
There is there is adjacent to those.
One town.
There is one town, one parcel that connects out to Maple.
To Davis.
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 Near the Fallon Road.
Yeah.
But there's no, there would be no way to get there unless those other conservation easements were modified to provide for trail access.
Right, and the conservation easements are in the back. There's a whole slew of these conservationisms in the back of maybe four properties on Davis.
Yeah, that sounds right, yeah.
Right, so and obviously that's private property and there's no public access. You know, the town can access that and we have the right to monitor it, but you know, to have to create sort of an open space network where people are tromping around in people's backyards is probably not going to go over too. So, yeah. So I mean, I think we've done this before on Michelle Lane. There was a similar situation where there was a playground. The neighborhood association did not want it anymore. So what happened was it, the neighborhood association dissolved. They divided the property among the two of butters and the conservation easement on the property remain. But in doing that, there had to be a subdivision modification and every single person in that subdivision had to agree to that. And then you had to go to planning and zoning commission and they, you know, have to review it and then agree to modify that subdivision. So it is a bit of a process, but I think you're coming here tonight to see if the town would like to accept that land. Is that correct?
Yeah. Okay, I just mentioned something about the bylaws saying that the property had to be turned over to the town.
So like if we have, if we don't want the piece of land, the first thing we have to do is donate to the town. And if if the town denied it or doesn't want it, then we can do something else that.
Okay, okay. So the operative word is offered to the town.
Yeah.
The town is first right to refusal.
So that's most likely a private part of your private bylaws, but maybe for the best thing for this committee to do would be to go out and take a walk on that property to see if something or maybe you know right now whether, you know, how.
I have a question. Is it possible to walk on this property?
No, I don't think so.
So. So if the town were to assume this and it becomes public property, that means that the public can walk on it.
Yeah. So you'd have all sorts of public to walk them back there. Sure.
Yeah.
And the town will become responsible for maintaining the property, which is overgrown in a state where it cannot currently be walked on, such that were the town to assume the property, the town would be potentially on the hook for significant maintenance costs. The town gains the parcel, but there are no further protective rights necessarily as there's already a conservation easement.
Yeah.
And you say that the playground is never built or no longer present?
No longer present. Yeah, because we didn't want to, the association didn't want to maintain the playground because there will be a lot of liability and insurance issue. So we we pick out all the equipments on the playground and then just let it grow and then put the sign saying that no trespassing. So that we don't have to maintain that land and it's just not equal.
I understand the GIS isn't working, but it'd be really great to be able to see the connection.
See that. I'm gonna hit reload again.
What am I trying on like?
Yeah, that is not just.
It's kind of hard to weigh in on it without.
You might be able to get at it just by looking at the the open space map in the town plan.
Yeah. What is the the web for? That. For our GIS.
It's just access to us.
I always just go into the assessor's office.
Or it's. Yeah, okay, I got it. I'm gonna try this.
I just go into the assessor's office and scroll on one screen.
Yeah.
Forests.
Yeah, it doesn't want to come up.
No, not at all, which is a really inconvenient.
I've got a version of the one page.
This is parks. These are. Reshards.
That map up enough. Yeah, I should. Just keep blowing that one up. Fine maple. So we go down. There's Davis, there's Maple. Okay. Yeah, it's right there.
So.
It's it's I looked at it this afternoon. This part, this part here, I believe, is the parcel in question. And this town parcel actually has a slim thinned.
Yeah.
A slim old right out to Davis Road.
Okay.
For those who who can't see the commissioner who's motioning to the screen, we're looking at this parcel here is what's in question. That's this parcel back here. And then we have the actual connection with the town on land is this tiny little flag lot here.
But that does not.
Directly connect.
Directly connect with the parcel.
The other thing when I had access to GIS this afternoon was that the agricultural soils stopped just shorter this parcel. So it's not maybe maybe twenty five feet.
Hmm.
That is more than twenty five feet are are prime agricultural soils, but.
So what would it be if you just let it be in your neighborhood? Just well.
We wanted to dissolve the association, not pay the two hundred dollar taxes every year and do it because no, because that's nobody wants the association anymore. We can't get officers or anything, yeah.
Do you have a plan if the town refuses?
Well, no, I don't think so, because your second choice there dividing it, the neighbors have decided that they don't want it. I don't know if they can convince them to take it because that'll raise their property taxes and blah, blah, blah. So they don't really want. This is why we chose this.
I can't speak for the assessor, but you know, if there was legally joined into the house, they're they're building a lot. If that's a discussion for the adjuster, the assessor, but that's that's a possibility to, you know.
Conservation easements aren't often highly valuable.
Yeah.
Stay on point, so.
What if one of the neighbors owned the parcel but did not incorporate it into their housing? And it was vacant land with a conservation easement.
I think they still would, it still would be the two hundred fifty dollars, but it would be one person paying it.
Nobody, 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 yeah.
And of course we come into this, which we want to avoid where people just don't pay taxes on the land and it becomes delinquent and then it goes up for a tax sale.
And then some random person, you know, someone outside would just buy the property and.
When the subdivision was built, I heard, I was assuming that Mansfield had that rule that you had to leave an open an open building lot in every subdivision. So they were required by the town to do that. It had open, open space. Yeah.
Yeah, was that what? What that piece was?
Explicitly, it was, it was created with the idea of having a neighborage playground.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh.
And the reason why if that were to change, you know, everyone in your subdivision would have to agree upon that is that, you know, this subdivision is going to go be on and on beyond all of us living, right? And so we, you know, the intention of when that land was subdivided was to have a community amenity. And now what you're doing is you're removing that community amenity.
Well, you actually have already removed.
Yes.
Community amenity.
Yeah.
People were coming with their children to play on it and they didn't live there. Excuse me, you know, and it would the liability because they're off. Of course, you can't have people. You have to put a trespassing sign right there. Cover yourself, yeah. And we have high insurance if we keep the playground. And our children are grown, yeah, and then we have our own place gets. Yes. So if the town rejected to take over the land, is there any possibility that we like the property tax can be waived somehow?
We can't speak to that. That's a discussion. It's not outside the realm of possibility, but we can't make any promises that beyond the planning department.
Oh, your neighborhood got you. Yeah.
Yeah, that's one of the things like with me, I think I was the last one to buy a house on that rule and I didn't have a choice. I had to.
Yeah.
Either be in or not buy the house.
That's the way it work, you know, I mean, you're, when you buy, when you buy a piece of property, a lot we, I we get so many calls in my department that I didn't know I had a conservation easement on my property and but that's just the way.
I get that.
Yeah.
But we have not been able to use property for anything either. So I mean, we're paying taxes on something that we have, like you, I've been there now five years. I get to use it for anything once since I've been there.
But that is a choice that the association has made to not maintain it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right, but you also have to understand there's been people that have come in and out of that that association that have left that cannot be replaced as president, vice president, secretary. Nobody wants to step up and do it.
Yeah.
How many people are in the neighborhood? I think eleven houses. So you're dividing two hundred fifty by eleven?
But then we have.
Seems to be a barrier.
We have to, because it's association, then we have to do the, yeah, all kinds of business, like business, we have to do the Connecticut business thorough or something and we have to pay for that. And then we have to file the tax return. We have to do a lot of paperwork. So we eventually, nobody really want to do that.
Yeah.
And just to keep the piece of land that nobody really go there or do anything, so.
Well, aren't there a lot of other subdivisions that have small chunks of open space? What's going on with that? I remember we made a list one time and there was a whole bunch of.
There's not that many.
Three acres here and four acres there.
He's done a really good job connecting the open space. There, but there are definitely a handful of the ones from the sixties and.
Yeah. I remember, I remember seeing a list one time.
They're.
The idea, so they can be just there. Our standards for accepting have changed.
Not in this situation, I mean, the way this one was set up, it was a neighborhood association and this was specifically for like a community amenity.
Right, okay.
So, you know, we have to go back and.
So it's not just pure open space now.
Yeah. Well, we have to go back and we have to look at, I mean, we did include the subdivision approval. Michael, if you want to just pull that up to see what the planning and zoning commission was thinking when they.
So the subdivision approval was nineteen ninety three. Zoom in here. You absolutely can't.
Oh.
Your deck dollars at work. So in nineteen ninety three, it was approved modifications subdivision application, Lowdy Association, and this may be forms. The map that we saw before was the six page subdivision plan. So no loss for sales, final house for science and the wetland commission had to meet its conditions. Let's go down here. Let's see. There is bonding. Final maps be revised to incorporate sign and seal, but the surveyor, playground equipment specifications is outlined to the public hearing and submitted information shall be added to plans. Both directions of Maple Road three hundred fifty, but sightline. So the playground was integral to the approval here.
So what you're gonna, so what's gonna have to happen is though there will have to be a the, a decision by the planning zoning commission to say that the playground is no longer integral and that will have to come before different committees and they will have to give, you know, provide input. So it is, it is this public process because it was this very extensive public process. I think we discussed our phones to when you're subdividing land, you know, it's, it's definitely a public process. So you know, we have to respect that process and if we want to change it, we have to follow another process. And usually that involves a land use attorney to come in and, you know, all of that. So it's not like as quick as as a lot of people thinks.
So what you could do is if you want to go forward with this, you could come to our office and meet with the planning staff. We can walk you through the subdivision modification application, explain what would be needed to make that happen. Then it would go out and be referred to this body as well as the other relevant bodies and come back and discuss there.
We started here because we first wanted to say that does the town want this? Because that's sort of like, we need to understand that first. And if the town doesn't want this for open space, then it's a different conversation and it's a different, your application for modification is different.
Yeah.
Sure. But in either case, planning and zoning would have to rule about there no longer being a playground.
Right, we'd have to do a little bit of research and maybe I vaguely remember at some point when Greg Paddock was here, some conversation about the playground here. So we have to do a little bit more research in the file to see if any other modification had been done.
And there's always a risk that somebody in your neighborhood would decide that that was an amenity that added value to their property and discontinuing it diminished the value of their house.
I don't think that's.
I don't think so.
Yeah.
Children are backing us, yeah. We had a meeting before that we give up the land. So everybody agreed that we are giving up the land. So just want to talk to the town and so that is why we. They all agree. Yeah, we all.
Yeah, I think the first, yeah, the first step is really for this committee.
Nope. I know, it's really inconvenient. So this committee could choose to just voice opinions tonight, not make any solid determinations, wait until July to do so at the next regularly scheduled meeting.
I see no advantage in the town owning the property, but there are several other pieces of property I can, that the town actually owns that I can say that about.
Well, we're not talking about taking those on now. We didn't have a choice and.
Yeah. A few, but yeah, we'd rather not. I, I don't see that it fits any of the criteria well for the town to accept it if it were a new proposal. That I think and I'd have to look at the record, but it would seem as though proposed as a neighborhood amenity with the playground is what made it an acceptable open space dedication for that subdivision.
I mean, I would still love to see the DIS. However, my understanding from what we saw there is just, I think, though, I got it from what you brought up there and it just, it doesn't look like there's any potential to actually have a connect up with other things on other side because the, the town's open space is separated by other easements from it. Yeah. And so that really limits its usefulness, in my opinion, to the town at large and I mean.
Yeah, there is at least one intervening conservation easement between the parcel and question.
Yeah.
And the town.
Yeah, I believe there are actually two private lots there with no access.
There's a few and they're not whole parcel, which, you know, it's one thing to acquire separated pieces with a single whole piece in between that you can subsequently acquire. This isn't the case with those other parcels. You'd have to acquire parts of properties which are boundary line adjustments. It it's not something the town is in the business of doing.
Yeah, you would end up with not.
And then it's our headache for a different thing.
Yeah.
It's good to know.
Yeah. Yeah.
Bring in wildlife to your backyard.
The deer, mother.
No one wants it now.
But if you can get the little pieces.
Future generations might like it.
Well, I don't think anyone in your subdivision wants it.
No, no.
Great, but I think you don't know what's going to happen and it could change. I, did I hear someone say that there was some prime agricultural soils?
No, it just misses that. That place where the houses are was.
It was a pumpkin patch.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I looked at that when we were looking for land.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. But yeah, there's no idea where the land up there. Nice.
Yes.
So for, for your purposes, so I would have to talk with Jen about if you are attempting to formally offer to the town what you have to do in order for the town to formally refuse. So you can say we've done our due diligence, private contracts with, with right of first refusal that you may need to put in an application and then be rejected, but I don't know.
I think what probably what you would do is you would submit a formal letter to, to my department, you could send it to me and then we could this tonight, you could authorize the chair, this committee could authorize the chair to draft a letter saying, no, thank you. And then we bring it to the town manager and then the town manager would then decide whether or not to bring it to the town council, but most likely he would just say but I have to, I have to kind of make sure it was your following procedure.
Yeah.
Which is wrong.
There, there may be a way to make it more, but this is a conversation to make it easier so that you don't have to do all that paperwork with the association, maybe dissolve the association but still keep that land somehow. But again, just. But still keep that land somehow, but again, just to think about that, that that's an attorney that may. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. But like if you keep the land, that means we have to pay for the property tax, can we do that without the association though?
I don't know, that's an attorney.
Yeah.
Yeah, you might want to stop by the accessories office. And see what implications of certain actions would be.
There there are parcels of land that are owned by multiple people.
Yeah. There are other vehicles like trusts of various types that can own things outside of.
You're still gonna have to pay property taxes.
Yeah.
But they're gonna be too.
That's not the deal, this is.
Yeah, I mean. You may be able to work around it, but we can, we can have an offline conversation about that. Okay, that would be not probably this committee.
Yeah.
Great, okay, sure, thank you, thank you very much, yes. Yeah.
Okay.
So I'll need a motion to uh respond to uh. I it when we see the application, when we see the app with the the note to offer the land formally to the town. From the committee.
I think she was saying we could do it.
Yeah.
The share.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, threat the chair to act and the.
And you have a verbal request to purchase to a verbal offer. Um if if you would need a formal letter. Declining that offer.
Yeah.
I think the committee would need to authorize the chair to work with staff on that letter.
I move that uh the chair be authorized to work with staff for any necessary uh response to an offer. Of this land to the town.
Second.
Then you want to post? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Okay, so that brings us to, yeah, four point, okay, thank you.
You can stay, you don't have to get out.
We're wonderfully entertaining.
We'll be more entertaining.
They're gonna go home and dial in for a zoom.
Okay.
Okay, that brings us to. Yes, yes. Okay, that brings us to four point two signage uh. So that means Cynthia, you should be joining us.
Yes, good evening, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
So I want to thank Cynthia, she was, she's a little bit weathered on, um thank you for coming, um Cynthia, even though it's remote.
I'm just gonna pull up the uh different signage types here.
Our gender, or even give up the screen real estate for.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So just so we have these four reference um and Jen and Cynthia, would you like to take it away on this one?
Sure, Cynthia, do you just, I think maybe what would be helpful for this committee is to kind of talk about how we got to where where we are with our signage and uh wayfinding master plan and I have. I have some of the the history, but Cynthia, so Cynthia has been, um this has been a a a town committee, a town staff committee. There was a whole master plan, there was a community engagement process um and Cynthia has been sort of the. The the project manager trying to keep this thing moving along, so Cynthia, do you want to just, would you be willing to kind of give an over, a high level overview?
Yeah, our concentration should be on the parks and. By default, some of the recreation. Implications uh. You know, this signage.
Well, I think it's it's good to just kind of understand how we got to where we are, just and then get into this part.
Yeah, I think we had a presentation a couple of years ago.
I can, I can give a uh as as Jen said, a hopefully high level overview, so this actually. Goes back as far as um twenty eighteen when the town council endorsed a positioning and marketing development plan. Uh for the towns and for uh K through eight schools, so the goal with the plan was how do we bring more families here, how do we bring more businesses here? And so there was a communications piece to it, which included the new, what? A couple of years now, but um the new logo, um new uh materials um and signage was a piece of it. Um it focused on the gateway signage, which we put in a couple of years ago. Um it also mentioned uh better signage for the parks was specifically called out along with some other signage. So we started to, after the gateway signings were done, um we wanted to engage a professional to do this, and so after a request for proposals process, we engaged Merge. Um and they are located outside Philadelphia and we started the, started the process, as Jen mentioned, we had a staff team. Uh that was made up of uh Jen, myself, Kathleen Patterson, who's our uh communications manager. Um Margaret Tady with um who's in the town manager's office, Derek Delai, um assistant town engineer. Um and then the former superintendent Kelly Lyman was also part of it, and we also brought in the university because um there's certainly a confluence of signs uh. That are, you know, when you come into Mansfield that direct you to UConn, and so we had the um Sean Vassington, UConn's landscape. Architect and um Tracy, and I'm forgetting her name for a minute, but she's in UConn Communications, so. We kind of worked through the processes, I think Chair Morrow is alluding to, we had a stakeholder meeting um back in February twenty twenty-two and I believe. He was at one of the meetings, we had three meetings with several town committees um. Uh groups that represented the arts, groups that represented adventure, we had somebody from the adventure park, um and so it was a pretty comprehensive group. And then Merge also uh put together a survey that was sent out pretty comprehensively to get um some feedback on what were some of the issues with our signage in Mansfield. Um so after that, um Merge put together a couple of different options, worked with the steering committee again, held a meeting with uh the stakeholders. Um you know, we certainly in the council presentation noted who was the, who was invited. I can't say that everybody that was represented did come to the second meeting, but I think it's important to know that that those that those groups were invited to the meeting. Um and then um so we started uh so Merge at that point gave a presentation to the council in February and um right now we're at the point where we are um. The Merge team has met with Connecticut DOT and we've also provided some input uh for the vehicular signs only. Um so we are waiting for some uh that to go to DOT and waiting for some feedback, in the meantime, we're trying to phase in and prioritize um the signage and the parks. Were thought to be a high priority, so they would be in phase one. Um so we're really excited because we think that um there's a need. Um I did want to mention that for the signs, I'm I'm gonna sort of veer a little bit outside of the park signs, but. Um these signs will be replacing other signs for the most part, we won't be adding to to signage, and I know there's always a concern about. Sign clutter and and we actually cut back on some of the signs that Merge proposed, they almost kind of start at the highest level, it's a lot easier to kind of cut back there, so. Um we're hoping to 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 implement phase one this fall if we can, um again, it would include the parks, there's a couple of kiosks and then um. Downtown stores, that's that's what we're looking at in terms of phase.
So so that's that's Cynthia, that Cynthia, that's phase one of the parks, different kiosks, there are actually three in Mansfield Center and how many in the downtown?
I think there's three in the downtown as well.
And the ones in Mansfield Center are specifically for to kind of, we we did receive a grant through CFPA. Um to kind of identify the um. Uh to highlight the that Mansfield Center is sort of this nexus of. A whole. A big trail system in Mansfield, and so um we've been trying to connect um. The public transportation, so folks that can take public transportation and then access the parks, so um part of the grant was to improve public access to Mansfield's trails. And so one of the kiosks will go right at the corner of one ninety-five and eighty-nine and direct people down. The safe routes to school. And then to the man, new Mansfield Elementary School, and then we'll be improving the um. The trail connection into Mansfield Hollow State Park, so and then just kind of wait. Providing a map, basically, so that's that we have been working with CFPA and I believe we talked to this committee about that. Way back when we dropped that grant, we we put it in, so those are the kiosks in Mansfield Center are gonna be really trail focused and those have not been the sign, the. What's identified on those, on that particular sign has not been identified, has not been. Completed yet, we are gonna be doing a little bit of a community outreach process for that, Michael is is working on that with um CFPA and we and. You'll be hearing about that soon, but.
Meeting uh onsite in May.
May, June.
May, June, um we'd love to have uh people film this committee at, um it's it's gonna be a big sidewalk that shows where we're intending things to go in. Here's coordination with Public Works to get those uh traffic signals in, um slow people down around that curve, let people cross, access the trails, use that signage.
So one of the things is for the, for the um for the signs that you're looking at here. Um there, the village signs are not part of this first phase, that's correct, Cynthia?
Yes, that's correct.
Right, so right now, when in terms of Merge and they're coming up with signs um. These are the kind of the three. Types of signs, so there's Michael, Jay and I, we did, we went and we did a drive-through, a tour of parks in Mansfield. And we took pictures of all of our signs, we have a lot of parks that have a either missing signs. Signs that have. Uh profanity on them, signs that are missing paint, we we have a real need to improve our park. Entryways and gateways and we do definitely need new signs, we went out there. This was basically the 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 scent, the. Heart ID sign two um was sort of the the one that we felt would be the most appropriate for most. Of the park, so you wanted to, there was.
Absolutely, so so parks, the signs there, which we'll just call one, two, three, going left, right, for simplicity sake, you can see they're all relatively tall um. We went around and what we've been thinking about a lot is many of our signs as they exist now exist in parallel to the roads. Which is kind of a detriment, because if you're driving, trying to find where a park is and it's in parallel to a road, you're not going to see. That the park is there, if you don't know it's there until you're halfway past and you go, oh, I think I just passed it, and then you took your eyes off the road and you're not supposed to do that. Um the the park sign twos um which are blade signs generally can be oriented such that they they don't have to have. Uh because they kind of hang forward, right, they can uh extend a little bit forward, you're gonna see them as you pass by, they're relatively tall. Um you can see uh each of these. Um sign shapes, this is uh footage, so the top of this pole comes out to about twelve feet from where it would be um from ground level.
It doesn't have to be that tall.
We can adjust this.
Yes.
Um. We can change the colors, so this is another thing, is we really liked the brown in general as a kind of woodsy feel, there were a couple of places where we thought. That the much larger sign, the sign three makes a lot more sense because you're trying to capture people's um vision, like at the front of Spicentango Ponds. That makes a lot more sense, um part sign one, uh we can change those colors, we could use the blue or the green or the brown, we've heard there are other. Colors that we can use as well, I haven't seen them yet, um but. Um the goal is to get at least one of these into every one of our parks as a new replacement that people can look at, now. Alongside all of these, which have our consistent branding, um though we can tweak the design, we have these at the bottom, so these four squares at the bottom. These are intended to be pictographic indicators of what kinds of things you do at those parks, if you've looked at our current trails maps. We already kind of do this with a couple of uh small images that show you can do fishing and kayaking here, this is a sports field, pretty much everything has hiking on it. Um. But uh Vicki wrote a letter um that talked a little bit about reticence about that, and I thought there were some really good points in that.
Um. About the the squares at the.
Yes, the square is the bottom, um among other things, um so. In general. Just to before turning it over to you all to discuss and then back to Jim and Cynthia, um. You know, these signs are going to be really great for consistent branding, I think that they're gonna look nice in terms of using that natural wood. Um finish is going to look really nice and give a consistent aesthetic to the parks um. We're not intending to remove information, um there are a bunch of signs at the parks that you've seen that have a whole bunch of info, I'm thinking of um uh is it uh? River Park, for example, there are kiosks there that have a whole bunch of historical information, we're not taking those out. That those aren't getting ripped out and replaced with something simple that's just three words, right, all of that stays and we have to keep all of our branding that acknowledges. Who gave the money to make these things possible, so we are going to be acknowledging people um. These are the early concepts, uh not early, um but these are, these are the concepts of of the name signs um for the parks as you enter, so um. I think those were the things I wanted to.
Yeah, so we're still reaching out to Merge, we want to see if those, this um park ID two. Uh or part. Part of sign.
Two.
Sign two can be um, we, I have a question as to whether or not it's double-sided, because since it is a blade sign, it it would be nice.
Have to, we have to be double.
Exactly, and I think that's a yes, or hopefully, but I think we can just. Design it so that it can be, and then we we do have to have a way somehow to acknowledge, and we have requirements from state grants, we have to somehow acknowledge. You know.
Yeah, state and federal.
For, and yes, so those are two things we're we're trying to work out, but that's basically um and you know, again, we can use this. Style sign, this style sign, and these could be brown. You know, but um so our thought is like for the more um like for the skate park. This is prob, this color is probably appropriate for maybe for sunny acres, this is probably appropriate, and that's gonna be Jay and Rec that are gonna decide that. For all of the parks that you guys are are involved with, I it this to me and driving around with Michael, it seemed that that was just the best.
Yeah.
Way to go, and I really, I, you know, when, you know, standing out there and looking at it and taking pictures, I really felt that blades, I was just gonna be a real. Help. For people to um. You know, figure out how to, how to find our perks, but again, it doesn't, we don't have to be this fine.
Well, it's I know that the drunk students will get hurt when they try to steal it.
Yeah.
And that is a huge issue.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I I think one post. Makes it much more vulnerable to vandalism and too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you're probably right with that. All I have to do is, you know, get six guys.
So.
With lamp posts, so.
Yeah.
So I guess for for Merge, it's the two, so I I will ask them about that, because they, you know, put these signs up. All over the place and they're, you know.
But I think, I think having a perpendicular.
They.
Is essential and even.
I have public work.
Style one would need to be a two-sided sign as well.
I am, yeah, they.
To the road.
It depends on how it's, how it's done, how it's.
Yeah.
So it's the speed and if you drive.
Yeah.
You gotta see it from both sides.
Yes.
One, driving by it. One thing about a two-sided sign, though, is it really shouldn't be. Asymmetrical like that is, because when you flip it around to the other side. The circle is gonna be on the other, is gonna have to be on the other side because of of the fact that the arc is kind of coming up. So when you switch, when you flip it around. It's gonna be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Inconsistent on the other side. So if you want all the signs to look the same. I mean, being asymmetrical isn't gonna work.
You could just swap the writing. It 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 would, it wouldn't be the same on both sides, but as as opposed to create the weird double shark fin effect that you would get otherwise, you could just swap the writing. Around and then have it winds up, the seal is on the right as opposed to the left.
To Merge.
They made that out, I trust them, they are smart people, they.
Branding for consistency. That's a consistency thing to consider if you're doing two-sided.
Yeah.
So is is it clear that branding is? It seems to me to be such a corporate way of approaching when I think of a certain small town. And I, you know, I'll admit, I did not respond to the request for. The original Mansfield Connecticut thing, because I just felt like. You know, what kind of people want to brand their community and therefore, as I listen to this. And therefore, as I listen to this discussion, that I can't quite grasp what what we're really trying to do with our town.
Well, I think if you go, maybe. Brand is a word that a lot of corporations use, but if you go to um, geez, if you go to a. It's they, they have a similar look, if you go to the national parks, they have a similar look. So if you think about it, that it's just consistency like, hey, I'm in Mansfield. I'm at a Mansfield park and I do think it's important for us, our parks to have, because they do now, they have a consistent.
Yeah, where the signs still exist. Point out that Mansfield Apollo Park.
Yeah.
Is a state park and.
Talk to them about that, yeah, I mean, that's their mistake, not ours.
Yeah, they're, we're not making the sign for.
Yeah. Getting all the complaints about the state park.
We already do, we're, we are definitely not having that sign.
I have a question just to bring up and I'm more playing devil's advocate, I actually really like. Brown for aesthetic purposes and parks and stuff and coming out of the Adirondacks is what they use for all their signs and everything, that's absolutely great. However, if the purpose of, if the main thing you're looking at using the single staffed sign for is to get attention when you're going down the road, brown isn't. The number one attention getting color, so I just think it should maybe be just noted or considered. What the options are there because I can tell you that those Adirondack signs that are brown and yellow that are so traditional and they're kept because. No one's going to change tradition, I probably would vote the same way, but you also don't actually read them all that well because they're brown. So if if we're walking a balance by having the flagged sign and keeping it brown. To have some attention getting properties and also keep the color that we like, then that's absolutely fine. If the main goal is so that that driver going down the road notices that sign brown might not be the number one color, but then again. People making signs also will know which colors stand out best and it's not always what you'd expect it would be, so.
The point is with a simple, with a single design, you know what you're looking for. You know, I'm thinking of the our state park shields, you know, where they have the, the basically the state shield.
Yeah.
You know, if you're looking for that sign, you may not be able to read it, but you can spot it.
This might stand out very well in the summer when everything's green, in the winter. There was, we're not seeing as much snow anymore.
It depends on the light face.
I had trouble with what was included in the packet. Uh there seemed to be four pages of every slide with the same information on all four pages. So it wasn't clear to me what the phasing was.
Oh.
I suspect what it is is it's one of these things where the PowerPoint itself had a fade in. Of four things on the same slide.
Well, the phasing, I mean, I think Vic um Cynthia mentioned what the phasing is right now and that's. Yeah, it's downtown partnership, getting people to and from, you know, in and making it consistent. Um and then parks because people need to know how to get to our parks and I have been waiting. For many years to be able to buy a park sign for Wetten Woods, Southwood Preserve.
Right, yeah.
Shelter Falls has been stolen and missing for like two and a half years and I need to file an insurance claim. And I need to know how much it's gonna cost, um you know, there is the, a. Very bad profanity on the um River Park sign that I I didn't even notice because it kind of blends in and I handed it to Ryan for. Just in case he needed to share it with, share like some ammo for the town council and then I was like, I looked at it closer and. Thank goodness, um it wasn't, it didn't go on the Zoom for the budget meeting because that would have been really bad. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of things going on with our park signs that.
Yeah.
It and will continue to go on.
Yeah, and so these, when we bid these out.
Um, so how easily does stuff clean off of these?
Well, the thing is, is we have a design, but we we have to go to bit, out to bit for this because we, and so. Um and merge, that's part of their scope is to help us develop the bid specs and then to work with us, um. I think Cynthia can speak to this, but I mean, they they know there's certain signs that are much more graffiti. You know, the bottom line is is that, I'm sure if someone wants to put graffiti, they can.
Where there's a will.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you know, we, I mean, it doesn't mean we're not gonna put signs up because, yeah, I mean, we're just gonna have to live with that.
Yeah. Yeah, the other question is, um, the sense about the pictographs across the bottom on each site. Do they, I'm of the opinion that they kind of clutter the sign.
Yeah.
Um, but you know, that's a personal opinion.
I think that this committee should weigh in on that and I think most likely merge would say that's fine, um. Cause we, I I do need to talk with them about the acknowledgements because that's gonna be something.
Yeah, I think I think it is something that's common enough on a lot of different signs that depending on. Um, how you choose the color and contrast, they'll be either in your face or relatively subtle.
Yeah.
I think I would find that useful as I was driving around town, there have definitely been times when I've been driving, I thought, oh, well, you know. I don't, we've been, we're taking our kayak over to one of the towns park and then we ended up driving past another one that was literally four minutes from my house and I saw. Something on it that implied that you could put a boat in the water there and thought, oh, well, there's one closer, this is great, um and if. You know, Shelter Falls Park might imply one thing to me or one thing to another person, but if you actually have something there that indicates what activities are possible. It can be helpful for the browsing um resident.
One important part of this that I've been thinking about is the ability to make those slightly more dynamic. Than static in terms of being able to easily place what's on those without needing to replace the whole sign. Um either having those be uh tiles that can be secured with screws or um scratches stickers, things like that. For whatever works for something that can be replaced when the use of the park is updated or. It can be uh if it's damaged, easily replaced, so that way you can see still what the use is because the intent is to convey information. You want it to continue to convey information, um but that's gonna change over time because the use of our parks will change over time. And we don't want to have to replace the whole sign if it's still working.
So is there any thought to put QR codes on the sign? Cause it seems like the modern world.
Yeah.
Eventually that info that's on the kiosks.
Yeah.
Is likely to, eventually the info that's on the kiosks is likely to be.
Ten feet in the air, is it gonna be very useful?
Could put it on. My camera's really good, I scan all sorts of stuff.
Okay. Yeah, now the computer security guy in me comes through with the idea that if you put a QR code on it. How do you keep somebody putting their QR code over yours and hijacking?
That far to hijack Lions Memorial Park's QR code to to disable someone's iPhone. For the fun of it, I I almost think you deserve it, right?
But this is, this is a university town with people that are experimenting with pushing the limits, yeah.
Well, I I think too that a QR code would be very subject to vandalism.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gone, yeah.
So I I think.
And hard to detect that it's been.
Right.
Yeah.
For the purposes of this committee, I think, and Cynthia chime in, um. Uh, I think I'd like to know that there's a comfort level with this general direction that we're going for the park signs. And that, you know, basically you're comfortable with this brown. Um sign, you're comfortable with staff kind of choosing whether or not it should be a blade sign or a sign like that. I think this would be highly, we wouldn't have very many like this big, um.
Question, yeah, what about having it on two sides? What is that going to do to the cost?
That's, I don't know, and that's something to, um certainly if we're doing a blade sign, I. Unless I hear something else, I think we have to have it on.
Yeah, because you're coming from both directions.
Yeah, and if if it's gonna be perpendicular, I don't know if it's gonna, so I I I, we need a little bit of clarification on how it's gonna be, um.
Yeah, yeah, there there's one advance to the blade sign, it's high enough that the vegetation doesn't have to be constantly mowed underneath it. You know, admittedly don't want it standing in a group of saplings, but.
And I'll I'll look into variable sign height.
Yeah.
But it it's more than likely that we can find different lengths of poles, I know they exist, so.
Oh, yeah.
Probably doable, that we could in different circumstances change the height of the sign.
Yeah.
So I'm hearing we need to check with merge about two sidedness, I, we need to get confirmation on this, how we're gonna do the acknowledgements. I want to check in on vandalism, uh height. What else are we?
Okay, check, check and see, I think some of those pictographs are available as standard.
Yeah, they are, they're a very standardized.
Yeah, but you, but you, but you get them, you can get them pre printed.
Yeah, then, right, um. So what is the, what does the group think about having pictographs or not?
I I have one thought about that, um and I don't know if it's worth doing or not. Is not just what's allowed, but possibly what is not allowed. And of course, it's, you know, mountain biking might be the first thing that comes to mind or. I don't know what else, but I just wanted to throw that out there as a potential for those boxes.
Well, I think, so if you go to our parks now and you look at our signs, you have like Shelter Falls Park or, I'm I'm thinking, um. Uh Summer Reserve, you've got the sign, you've got the acknowledgement, open from dawn to dusk, you know, and then what. What's permitted and not permitted, no alcohol or whatever, so I think we have to.
That that would still be there, right, what's permitted and not permitted.
I have to figure out with them how to do that, yeah.
Yeah, well, that that really should be a separate sign.
It could be a separate.
Yeah, yeah, wh- whether than the sign, the swizzle from the road.
Right, it's Shelter Falls, this is what you can do, you walk in a little bit more.
And there's a regular.
You know, deep, donate you.
Yeah.
Gonna be the open space watershed.
Yeah.
Um, open from dawn to dusk, blah, 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 blah.
And and whatever's like, no motor vehicles.
Right, whatever the scan, we have a standard thing that we say, yeah.
Yeah, we'll we'll explore that with merge because that that will also determine whether we can even have the pictographs on the sign or they say, no, we can't really do that. It would have to be on one sign, that we have to lose space elsewhere.
Yeah.
If we can functionally say all of that on a separate sign, do we need the pictographs, so.
I.
You're a good idea.
As you.
Tom has this question.
Okay, I don't usually speak up as much, but uh and I'm hoping that you've already thought this one through. But I think a very crucial thing about signs, because I've seen some signs that are really nice, but they're placed in the wrong place. I wanna make sure that we think about line of sight for cars coming out because there's so many signs out there where. The signs right in there and you can't see who's coming from there, so I I'm hoping you're already thought about that.
Like coming out of horse bar hill road.
And that's where, you know, we have our.
That's why Derek maybe.
That that's what he does all the time.
I just wanted to mention. And it gets lost so many times, yeah.
They, there are lines there, does that mean that that Shelter Falls Park sign is like thirty inches tall, the whole thing?
Uh, whatever that is.
Just imagining that each row is a foot. That's a pretty good size.
Yeah.
Compared to the person, it's quite large.
Yeah, they've got the top of that twelve feet in the air.
I don't know, it seems something like you'd see on an interstate highway maybe, and I don't really know if that's true.
Signs are almost so, always so much bigger, once you're standing next to them than when you're on the road anyway.
Very surprising.
Yeah, there there were, there were guidelines for type size and and traffic speed.
Yeah, yeah. And and that's, that's one thing I wanted to uh appreciate that.
About three feet, it's from about eight feet to about eleven feet, just.
Not including the framing.
Not including the framing, so just the sign itself, sign face.
Right.
Is three feet and that's pretty much the same size for the um sign one and two. It's a, it's a medium face, opposed to the side three, I think the only one we identified is is needing a sign three is Bicentennial Pond. Um because you drive in all the way and it's just a big standing welcome to Bicentennial Pond as we walk in, um. So that's most of what we're looking at.
I like.
But I think one of the things I do appreciate that Cynthia said is that they're they're consulting with DOT. Cause a lot of the stuff in the package that we had were things that that, there are standard. National Highway Transportation Standards for some of these signs. And to to put some things that are not meeting the standard for everywhere in the nation that you drive. It's gonna be confusing and I think we need to really step back on on what way finding signs are. That overlap where there are national standards.
And that's why, you know, we hired someone like Merge, because that's what they do and and there, they have been interact, we. Part of the scope of this was for them to interact with DOT because what, we can't just put a sign on a state road without DOT or people. And so that's, that's been really.
But I saw some of the later phases, some of the signs overlap with the consigns DOT puts out anyway.
Yeah, and those will be in 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 some instances replaced, will replace the the existing signs.
I think that would be very confusing because people recognize the DOT.
Can you talk about what's helped, because Cynthia's been more involved with that.
Yeah, so um when we met with DOT, uh we gave Glenn Swan, Tuck, one of the principals with Merge, gave them a packet. And again, they're just really looking at the vehicular signs on the state roads. Um and they were, you know, very receptive to changing some of these, I mean, if you, if you look at some of their signs, they've seen better. Days, um so, you know, again, it would give the consistency and the same thing with Yukon. Um, you know, we were able to discuss that sort of, again, that confluence of Yukon and town and where they meet. And they were, you know, they were fine with the town kind of taking that piece that's in the town of Mansfield, not on the Yukon campus, so. You saw that in the pre, the council presentation, there were some slides that showed some examples, so. Um, yeah, the DOT part is critical, um and they have worked in New Haven before, it's a different district. Um so it's different folks, but um they were, the merge folks are pretty aware of, you know, DOT, um Connecticut DOT. Standards, so that's kind of where we are besides the the sort of work that you all are doing and and the work that Jen and Michael have been doing to put together. A palette for them, for Glenn and some questions where, you know, the next step, as I said, is to, is to get DOT to sign off on the. On the vehicular signs.
And I I saw the examples from New Haven, the difference is, is New Haven is mostly municipal. Highway Department, not State Transportation Department. And I think when you get signage on state roads, if it doesn't conform to what everybody expects to see. It's not necessarily going to be readily picked out as that's a directional sign.
Yeah, I mean, we'll see what their their final review is, but again, in our in our um meeting with them, which is, you know, an hour plus. They were, they were pretty receptive and understanding of what we were trying to do with the overall goal in mind of continuing to provide the best direction. To people coming into Mansfield.
If DOT tells us, replace our old signs that are falling apart, we're fine with you doing that, we're not going to say no.
Shouldn't DOT be replacing those signs?
That's a really good point, but we can't control.
Point is, you can complain to them about signs that are not functional.
Then we don't get any signs.
But but why should we be doing what's on DOT's budget?
Exactly, why are we spending town money when the state should be spending the money?
Because the state's not going to spend the money and we have an obligation to our citizens and we'll do it now.
Can you, I don't know, you have a. What your thoughts on that, I I don't know what, what.
Yeah.
But I assume that that's most likely the.
No one at the state has money, is what it usually comes down to.
No government has money.
I still think that's the reason for us to spend more.
Yeah, well, that's that's like, that's like, why should we be providing signage? For helping people get to Yukon when Yukon should be stepping up and saying, here we are, folks.
I think we're getting the stuff the town council should decide.
All right, is there?
Okay, well, the question that I think was, uh, that I was asked was about the um. The little pictographs, and I kind of we should give Cynthia and the rest of staff a sense of how we feel about that. I'm I'm good with it.
Yeah.
I think as long as they can be easily changed.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah. And I and and standard, make sure they're.
Yeah, yeah.
Because the standard nationwide.
Yeah, look to National Park Service guidelines for what to stick up.
I mean, if it's easily changed, then there's future possibility of using one for a QR code if you wanted to, so that's always added value potentially.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, and I think the the point made that that prohibitions should be included in the pictograph. Uh, menu.
Sure, I don't know, we can explore those.
Depends on how many there are.
Yeah. Yeah, well.
You don't think it's, we're stuck to four.
You're trying to pull people in with these signs, once they're there, you can tell them what not to do.
Yeah, yeah, well, it was, you know. Most places you go, you expect to see a regulation sign.
Yeah.
At someplace near the parking area or the bike entrance or what have you.
And is there, have they worked on a branded approach for when we put in new signs like that? To be consistent?
I'm afraid I'd follow the question.
Sounds like what?
Well, if we're gonna, we have kiosks or or extensive signage at many of our parks.
Yeah.
As that gets replaced or maintained, is there gonna be a standard branding?
That's not part of their scope of Merge's scope, so that's, I mean, we obviously wanna see if it's. See if it can be consistent, but they're not doing wayfinding within the parks, that's a much bigger lift for them.
That's where you, that's where you establish your continuity of branding.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we'll have to, it will, whatever we do, it will be consistent, and we'll have to see if we.
Yeah, but I I think what Ken was talking about was the um. The regulatory sign that says this is what's allowed, the park is open dawn to dusk and.
Yeah.
And so forth, come up with a consistent design for replacements.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we'll talk to, we'll talk to Merge about this as part of, what we have to get onto the signs for acknowledgements, so that'll be part of our discussion.
Yeah.
For the sign, could the acknowledgements be separate?
They could, I mean, we have, that's a.
You know, I I'm just thinking, this sign is getting busy.
Yeah, I think so.
And if the purpose of this sign is to tell people, you're here. You don't want a lot of distractions, you want.
Yeah.
I have a feeling that's what they're gonna say, and I have a feeling that we're gonna end up doing one kind of like we did. Yeah, like the this one, this.
The Shelter Falls.
Like that's just on one single post, it has a little round circular thing, and it says. All the things that need to be said.
Wait, mounted on that post.
Or not, yeah, I would like to get their guidance, cuz it could get a little busy with all that stuff, if you're on the road.
Yeah.
Might be.
Yeah, well, what if it's.
I I need to ask.
We need a markup. That would be.
Well, this is the markup.
No, no, I mean.
Yeah.
Into the ground.
Yeah.
Of of the first one that we're.
Photoshop it into a location.
No, you need to walk right up to it, how far in your car can you see the sign? And does, I mean, for me, this white on brown is really good for my eyes, but I don't know if that would be the case when I'm driving. But um I know a lot of color combinations are not readable.
No, I mean, like a test drive, yeah. What's it like driving down, put on cardboard or something?
Yeah.
For each part?
Just a test drive.
Yeah.
Highlight.
Yeah, we could do, I mean, I'm sure, yeah, I mean.
I think that would be a good idea before being desk a lot of money.
Yeah.
We don't like it, I mean, let's.
Yeah. The thing is like, is such a, it's such a.
Yeah.
I don't know that anyone is.
I I'm not, I'm saying, do they work?
Do they?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And it doesn't have to look like that sign, it could just be the twelve foot post.
Yeah.
A three by three sign, and maybe the words Shelter Falls on it, yeah, that way, and put it in the ground. We can take a drive by.
Yeah.
Other people can take a drive by, and we'll see if it works.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can definitely.
Shelter, that's a good thought, because even if it's done on a piece of plywood, Shelter Falls needs some type of sign.
There's gotta be two.
That's the one.
We're going from zero to two, that's the plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, do do we have enough information for the minute, Ken, do you?
I'm just gonna put, things were discussed.
People, I I just wanna make sure that things are discussed, and folks are more comfortable with how the the direction we're taking.
Well, I think we need to summarize what direction.
Okay, then I think the minute should summarize that direction, so someone, if someone wants to do that, and then we can.
All right, I think we're doing sign two, so that we're doing.
For the majority, there may be.
Yeah.
Although there was a discussion about having two posts. Yeah, I I I tend to agree with that, that we need the two posts as opposed to one post, because. If you saw the after these, yeah, after the basketball game. How easily they took like twelve lamp posts down with three or four guys wobbling it back and forth, it was. It was a little ridiculous.
The problem is on roads here, though, where we don't have much of a so shoulder and things, they're not gonna have the space necessarily to get the two posts and have the sign actually stick out.
Yeah.
Push on the side.
Yeah, there's another consideration too, is, you know, you don't want hard objects for people to spear into when they're on their cell phone.
Yeah, I think I need guidance from Merge, up to them to know, um, like to tell me. Like, how hard are these to get? Uh, of the, because bottom line is, is that, I mean, that they do this all over the country, right, they're signed.
Yes.
Restless, that's like their main gig.
Yeah.
Um, so I wanna know. And and also, their the manufacturer is gonna have, is gonna tell us too.
Yeah.
And it's all, also, it depends on how it's installed, so if if someone wants to get a sign out of the ground, cuz they're.
They're gonna get, yeah.
We win the national championship, they can get a sign out, where there's a will, there's way, so.
Yeah.
You have to design it for sturdiness.
Yeah.
But not for. You know, it, yeah.
Resistance.
Well, it was, it was like the the thing is that when we put some things in into Merrill Meadow. They were supposed to put a crosspiece on the bottom, and they didn't, and that's why all the bridges came flying. Floating merrily out of the ground when the river came up, but then they came back in and put the crossbars. On the bottom, and they have been underwater, and they haven't floated out, so that was just a very simple little, they put a. Board across the bottom, so, you know, I'm sure they know how to make signs stay where they belong, but. Some of the orange cement. So, we're expressing a preference for uh, for the park signage. Yes. We're expressing a preference for style two, in brown. Um. And concerned about. Durability for vandalism. And we're accepting the concept of having um activity icons.
As long as they are easily modifiable.
Yeah, well, I'm, we're we're recommending.
Do we know what the signs are made of, are they?
We don't, yeah.
No, this is designed when we get our our feedback.
Okay.
Find out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, there's so many different.
What are these?
Possibilities.
Medallions and pictograph.
Pictographs.
Pictographs.
Okay, so what we're. So our thought is to have um removable pictographs or changeable.
Changeable.
Easily changeable.
Well, it it think of it, and if a sign can be designed to have things like that changed, think about the way. Over the years, the the Diamond Lane went from a three car, three person to a two person, all they did was put a. New number on and a little square.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's time carpool lanes for three people.
That's what, that's what they were initially.
That that is another.
This is probably not answerable, but is there any research on what makes a sign attractive to undergraduate students?
Well, I can, I can actually, the first nature scenario I worked at.
To get.
We had trail marker signs, this is, this is really funny. Because we, the first set that we got were really pretty, they were, you know.
Is it Merrill Meadow, right?
No, this is one I worked in Bristol, my first nature center. We had a company that made beautiful, beautiful trail marker signs to mark the numbers on the trails. They lasted four days, and they were all gone. They were very pretty, they would look really nice hanging on someone's wall, and that's where they ended up. So we went to a square of wood that we painted, they lasted two weeks, and they were all gone. And then we went to juice can lids. And we put up a set of juice can lids, and ten years later, all the juice can lids were still there, so. The uglier you can make them, the more likely they are to stay.
That doesn't bode well.
I know, but I say that, on it, it's true.
My neighborhood used to have signs, and they were on two posts and chains and all this stuff, and they disappeared.
Yeah, yeah. I said, well, we made them ugly as possible and cheap as possible, nobody stole them.
Okay, and we're also talking about having the sign be perpendicular to the road and have two sides.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that. So that would actually have to be two signs, looking at the sign to it, I'm assuming that it's resting against two uprights.
That we have to work.
No, it has to hang like that, instead of like number one, because that's number one, you could slip on the other side.
It's gonna work in terms of like, ultimately, how people are gonna find the parks.
And I mean, ultimately, when it comes to uh what, like what it's made of, that first is, looks like it's resting, but they could choose to do hanging chains. And then just print on the side. We'll find out what's.
Details that need to be.
Hanging signs that'll swing out of the way if the wind gets too high.
No, I could think of other things.
Yeah, at the bottom on this picture.
Yeah.
So.
All right, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I'm gonna, Cynthia, I know, has to.
Yeah.
Cynthia, is there anything else that you wanted to add, or is there anything else that you needed from this group, or um that we're forgetting? Or have we put this?
I I appreciate the dialogue, and um, you know, Jen and Michael have been doing a great job at working with um. With Glenn at Merge already, so we'll continue that dialogue with them, and um. And yeah, we're excited, and hopefully we'll get something up on the next couple of months with any luck.
I mean, this is like the fun, this is good, we needed to kind of process this um and and get it out, yeah, so.
And and I would like to have a sample sign, if public works and put something up.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to be fancy, just.
Derek's all, he can hold it.
Yeah, really, there you go.
No, I mean, yeah, I think that was.
I think that one, once we get to the manufacturing stage, they could, they they may be able to do a markup, so that's something we should.
Yeah.
And, you know, we've done, like, even Signs Plus have done affordable. Kind of inexpensive signs, they might be able to do like for a markup, and so we can kind of see it.
Doesn't have to be fancy.
All right. Thank you so much, Cynthia.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And this is the fourth, three, the uh special permit from off to the core corners area.
Now the easy steps out of the way.
So I I am, this, this was referred out to, I believe, but. Um, this doesn't, this property does not have any open space that goes with it, right?
I know.
So so I I'm wondering, well, I, what was it referred out to them, or was it, uh, did you? I can't remember, I don't think I put it out on a staff report, did I?
So this was one of those things where uh we talked internally about bringing it to this nation. Uh, and conservation, just to, just to see if there's any reason why you wanna go walk it. We, there is no dedicated open space, um, we have, there's, there's very sad wetlands, so I pulled this up on the screen here, just so we can see it. We're just gonna do this. Um, I don't remember much in the way of trails and walking paths.
Okay, why don't you start by orientate people, let's check where they are.
Of course, that's a very good idea, this is here, so what you're looking at here. Um, is the existing restaurants and structures on site are here in gray, so this is Four Corners. Uh, middle turnpike goes this way.
Where's CBS?
So CBS is across, uh.
On the blind.
So are the, are the things that are in gray staying?
Yes.
Okay.
So those buildings.
That, yes.
Let's toast and stuff.
Thank God.
Toast and.
Uh.
Gas.
Hops.
The gas station mics, hops, and toasts are staying.
Their parking will be reconfigured a little.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So their their initial existing parking is over here, but it's integrating into the greater parking complex where we have. These three structures, uh, which is quite a lot of retail as well as residential. Um, there are, uh, this, so this passed through wetlands already, there are some wetlands that are being filled. Um, up here, in order to make the site usable, um, there's wetlands creation remediation intended that was approved. Um, that'll be monitored for, I think it's five years for the wetlands permit, um. So, th- this is pretty much the extent of the site.
How how close does it get to the pond? Um, on the left hand side there.
Well.
I I I was having trouble viewing how far down it goes.
Get to the development activity.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, the.
Much beyond the trap.
Yeah.
So it's it's not that close, um, so the the pond is on the property of the standard, um, the the one that is under.
Yeah, yeah.
There will be. Most of it, yes, there's a little bit, but it's in the back of this one.
So we'll just pop in here, so this is the story map, for those who are unfamiliar, I really love the story map, so I'm going to. I'm going to do the story map again, um, so we are looking at Four Corners development here. Just gonna zoom in for a sec. Oh, isn't this great?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yes, that's what I was, I was trying to picture.
So, so I was out of the standard today, um, and basically, their limit of disturbance that you can see here from the twenty nineteen aerials, that's the same. And then the limit of disturbance down here, you can kind of see the edges of the land that they're gonna work on. Uh, because this is the existing field, so that's the same.
Okay.
Um, you can see up in this, this rendering, this artistic rendering, they have, this is the edge of the ponds. So they've still got, they are further from the pond than.
Than the other.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
There there's two things, when we were talking with the standard was um. Trying to encourage them to create a sidewalk going to the to the to the bus stop.
So there, this, there is a, um, the standard, the regulations require that they have a sign up all along their frontage, and.
Yeah.
For this commission's committee, yes, and it's gonna actually come in. Inside and go, it will, there'll be a bridge that will cross uh at the airport of the wetlands, and then the the sidewalk will have to go all along.
Yeah, yeah. See, that's, and this this development, I see is a continuation of that sidewalk. Prime in the area that is in their property, so.
So their their artistic rendering does have their sidewalk, so this is, this is looking um west, right? This is the sidewalk that would continue, and then behind this building hook into that trail and go to the standard.
I have some great concerns that we're gonna wind up with two properties with sidewalks along the road. That don't have a good connection.
That don't have a good connection.
Yeah.
They do.
They will, yeah, yeah, good.
We've, that was part of the um hope, we we have, we put the two engineers together.
They're not getting their bond back until they make that connection.
Okay.
They have to.
Okay, that was that was one of our major, my major concern.
They're they're immediately.
I don't like giving people.
And the the others, the other general concern I have is. We have a. Between four corners and back to the golf course Cedar Swamp Road. We have in quite a few units of housing. And very little recreational amenities. Well, I think, I think the university can give us. The parcel that was going to be developed. As a town park.
Well, there you go.
That's not gonna happen, excellent.
Ken, are you heading up the committee to to work on that?
Right, so so Tori and everyone else is also going this way, right, so we have. Development and topic here. Then the two parcels for. Uh, that the parcel most recently walked the tree farm and the adjoining parcel here, and the golf courses over here.
Yeah.
So. This is the easternmost of the.
Intersection. And potentially.
Gonna be harder to get breakfast.
Yeah.
That is.
Yeah.
Yes, so this is the last one, um this is this undeveloped piece here, this is much earlier in the process, we don't even have a live application, it was rejected at. Plan zoning before for zone change landing, we haven't had anything come back, so that's very early. Um, if that happens.
But you've you've also got additional land that's gonna come into play east of Cumberley's Cumberland Farms. You got, you got a lot of vacant land there that's on the water.
This parcel is also noted in our plan of conservation and development as being a potential transition zone between high density and low density.
Yeah.
Um, so we still have to land that zone, but that would be, that could happen there.
And and scroll up so people can get a picture where um rolling hill. No, go, go down.
You mean this way?
Yeah, rolling hills.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's here, that's right across the street.
So you know, so that. We're getting this high density uh residential and some retail and business, but. We have, it's a big change. In what's hap-. What's happens around four corners. And. You know, how do we provide for? You know. Some types of recreation there. Now, like um. You know, Circle Drive, we have Sunny Acres Park with its half. Big or lot, you know, et cetera, you know. Now the store's center, this wet and woods area and Moss Sanctuary.
Well, what space do we have?
Dedicated right now.
Not much.
So. Think about this in areas that can't be developed, of course. Um, so Sears Swamp Brook itself is floodplain in here. Um, this is basically untouchable as a result, um there, the the, I have to talk to Derek, he was out today um about. The Loma that they're filing to modify the floodplain just a little bit in here, um because that takes a while. Um, but you know, all of this stays as dedicated open space, um.
But it's.
But it's. Is it really usable? Um, they're on hypothetically, hypothetically, on this parcel at least, there are walking trails in the back from the time it was the tree farm. So there is this culvert. Which crosses here about and goes back into this, which will stay that. And remains that, it's a little bit higher and drier. Um, so that exists.
But that's basically it's going to be accessible only to the residents of that complex.
Yes. I I mean, if both of these are to be approved, the residents of this complex, there is an intended footbridge and footpath that connects to this complex. So these two, uh they are developed by the same companies, so it's easy to think of those ones, but there are two applications, uh you know, these two would be. Um, I. Need to take an intense look at this, um at the golf course, um which we have received. Um, received last night at plan zoning.
Different is it from what was proposed earlier?
Yes.
It's it's the same, I mean, they're they're basically developing rest in this area and then.
So they had a back area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's also, it's it's passive hiking trails that are difficult for people not in that development to access.
Yeah. That's fair.
Question.
Hmm.
When we walked that property with them.
Yeah.
They, at that point were proposing turning over the back acreage to the town.
They're they're thinking, they're, I think they're thinking, to be honest, I have to look at that application to kind of open it up and dust it off and figure out what they're doing.
Yeah.
But um I think that um that was definitely something that they were. Very open to. And um so we need to just, that's.
And the question was, how was the public, other than the people in that development, going to get there? Because there really was no good public access.
Well, from Cedar Swamp Road, they're.
You partner.
Yeah.
Remember, they wanted to go down the old town and turnpike?
Right.
And we had to tell them, hey, you only own half of that turnpike, you do not own.
So we, so let's, we'll have to look at this.
Yeah.
Right now, right now, we're looking at at a different application, we're looking at the uh.
Right.
They breed that theoretically.
Is what can be available for everyone in the trade.
Yeah.
So that's why I'm asking about that parcel, because to me, that is the most likely place that could be. Public amenity for everyone.
Yeah.
Uh, not easy to get to it along one ninety five.
Mm hmm.
It's not easy to walk on one ninety five.
Yeah.
But it it really is the only dry open space of any size.
Yeah. And and that also is the, that also is. That. The the what I think is a golf course is also possible connections to um Brenwood and Forest Road and so forth.
So who bought that parcel? Remember there was always that for sale sign across some ponies?
And that's the same one.
Yeah, yeah, if you.
They who.
If you, if if you track back the golf course out by Tony's and two or three other parcels, spend some time, you all end up in the same real estate investment trust. They all have different owners, but if you track back, it all ends up in some address in uh. Greenwich, is it or Stanford?
Greenwich.
Yeah, you know, which happens to be a lawyer's office.
So.
Does raise the possibility then of connecting that's for.
Yeah.
That are are not really.
Yes, but my 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 concern is. The change in density without. We have to, from our perspective, we have to look at what's there for. You know, recreation, passive recreation.
So from for this one, so to focus on this one, so I will, I will make sure at our July meeting that. This application, which we have received, is here for you.
Actually.
Where do we already go over that?
The the, we're gonna have that public hearing for that one is June twentieth, so we're gonna have to.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
So that wetland is undevelopable with Cedar Swamp, because that's been owned by one of these corporations is.
Hmm.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, it's uh. These various parcels are. Got dozens of parcels.
In the resting, a lot of the Cedar Swamp. South of um. South of one ninety five there is actually. Tied in to the Mansfield Professional Park.
Yeah.
Ownership.
Oh, really?
Yes, I I I've obviously spent some time in the non-accessible town GIS and was sort of surprised at this.
So I I did want to mention one thing about this kind of. You know, I I mean, obviously, a developer looks at. They look at one thing at a time, it's the town responsibility to took it to look at um this at a higher level. I have talked with um the UConn Landscape Architecture Program and what they're, they run that small studio class, and I've asked them. As one of their projects to take a look at this and and to see how we can connect these.
Thank you.
Because, so I think that is gonna come, what we should be able to make. What would be great is that we come up with something, um you know, then we're able to kind of. Either apply for a grant or you know, just make it a better.
Or at least have a vision.
Exactly, we need some sort of vision.
I I just feel it's really important for our community to be thinking about this.
Uh, as a bigger. Higher level scale, absolutely.
Yeah, so we have, we have that packet, um I will send you all the link to the um application.
So you'll be getting a a referral like the normal do, and that's gonna happen tomorrow, and um as soon as I get a chance to do those. Um, so um. That will be, and then we'll get that on a, we will need to have a special meeting.
We've been down this road.
Yes, well, technically, this is a special meeting. Yeah, okay, do we have anything else on that? Well, actually, I have two things that aren't this committee related. But uh, I'll pass them on to concern for people who are into planning. Um. Number one. I'm a little concerned if the sidewalk is not right on the street there where that. Right in only, right out only. Driveway is, that's a little better. But. I don't know how many times I've people seen people take a left out of dog lane. Uh, even though it's a right only.
Oh, you're talking about. Making sure it's safe at the, at this.
Yeah.
Yeah, four corners.
Yeah, because that's a, that's a curve.
We will be getting, so as with all of these applications, it's um we're having um. Traffic engineers, we have a traffic engineer, landscape architect, affordable housing. Um consultant reviewing these um, these applications and applicants pay for that, so as part of their um. But they report to the planning and commission, so they will be looking at that and taking.
Because because when you add in all of these individual projects.
Yep.
There's some total of the traffic.
Yep.
Is gonna be amazing, and and I I just. A traffic engineer could say, you're only allowed to take a right-hand turn. But the kid in the in the Lamborghini.
Yes.
It's gonna drive wherever he wants to.
Right. Just, just as a kind of high level things when the town is looking at it. Um. Is.
Where we go.
Uh, just stay right here.
Okay.
Yeah.
So change, they they call it um instead of four corners, two circles. So I don't know if you guys are um talking. There, there's a big push in Connecticut and throughout the country to do roundabouts. Uh, for a number of different, a number of different um reasons for traffic calming, pedestrian safety. Um, it's better for your carbon footprint, this is less idling, so there, they are studying roundabouts here. And roundabouts here. It would allow for the road to be um, you know, just for there to be. Some plantings to make it look more aesthetically pleasing, so that is something that is gonna be looked at, I don't know how much traction.
It's a state highway, you can't plant any trees, you gotta cut down every tree within fifty feet of it.
Well, that will be up to the traffic engineer and D P W to do, so that's, that's what they're doing, um they, when we did put in a grant, um a grant. Um, to Courtney and Murphy's office and Lumenthal to find, for the third time, to see if we can find the sidewalk. From CBS all the way down to Tower Hill. But yeah, so so that we will have.
The tower dorms.
Yeah, so one continuous sidewalk, so we're waiting, we have gotten. For the third time, with that, we've gotten some positive feedback, so we're hopeful that maybe we'll get that funding to um to get that done.
Frankly, that would be a much better use of money than roundabouts.
Yeah.
If you put twenty year olds in a roundabout.
I've been doing roundabouts great for nine years.
Hmm.
Yeah, I I like.
I don't think there are problems personally, not even from just a planning standpoint.
Go look at the one by Goodwin Elementary.
That's not, that's not a close.
That's a joke, you know.
The one I, the town I grew up in, actually, they got roundabouts when I was about college age or so, and. I can say that I I I was looking, going, really, I don't think this is a great idea, and basically everybody did, and now I can actually tell you that driving home was far easier because of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't, I was anti that until they were all there, so I don't.
Yeah. That's ridiculous.
Roundabout committee.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna let the traffic engineers kind of.
You know.
Watch people have a pro.
Well.
Once you get it, now I think that is going around the other way, that's a little weird.
Yeah, for us.
For us.
Not for them, they think this one's very good.
Yeah.
So anyways, so that's.
The other concern I have, and you're probably constrained by how. Your regs are written. But. You got. What, hundred pages of. Output from hydro cat. Or, or you're on your stormwater. But. The input. Doesn't take into account. The fact that precipitation is changing in the future.
Well, we're doing, I mean, one of the things that um Mansfield does is we use different rainfall data than many towns do, so we're using this NOAA Atlas fourteen, which is um a. I think the other towns are using this very old rainfall data, so not perfect, but um you know, again. It's uh.
The information.
Does that mean we're using the two thousand two, two thousand twenty data instead of the nineteen eighty to two thousand, basically?
But that doesn't.
It's going to be far more dramatic.
Yeah.
In the future, just as a climate scientist.
Take that and multiply it.
The fifty year storm of today.
Nor is right.
Will be a twenty-five year storm by mid-century.
Yeah.
And if you're not planning for that, you're gonna wind up with. Flooding and erosion. Or higher maintenance costs. Because you haven't built something that. If you're building to only wash out every twenty-five years, and it washes out every ten years, you've doubled your maintenance cost. We're making the same mistake with our landfill designs, on some of the big landfills that they're closing and putting stormwater management on. It's gonna come back and bite us.
But there aren't solutions to a lot of that stuff that they they don't, we don't even have good, you know.
So just to keep us, because it's almost nine o'clock, and Michael has an hour drive.
No, no.
This is our.
It's fine.
No, this is our second meeting.
Yes.
Yes, so um, so.
You move to Mansfield.
Save the money to buy a house.
Now we have to triple their salary. There's a, there's a house that just went on the market on Hanks Hill for. Under eight hundred thousand.
I saw. I can say, if I can sell my kidney and my wife's kidney, we'll have half a down payment.
Okay, so can we move?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
There's plenty of stuff on the agenda.
Yes.
What else do we need to talk about?
Need to, that's up to you. Um, so mountain bike trails.
Um, well.
Mountain bikes and parks.
Would I rather, if if it's, if it's, if I might suggest, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
It could um. This bike pet plan, um I sort of feel like we need. To get a handle on that, because I do need to get back to Juan, because he wants to have a public hearing um with the uh Planning Zone Commission and Town Council, so. Um, I don't know if you all have the bandwidth to kind of. I mean, when I I I I was not at your in attendance at your meeting, I didn't listen online to your meeting, but it's. I think Juan was of the impression that you endorsed this plan.
We endorse the concept of.
Right, so I think you endorse something. Right, so I think that's what you all need to provide more feedback on, so that we can go to the Planning Zone Commission and Town Council and understand. What this committee is supportive of. Um. And I almost think it's like a big printout of the map or and.
Another session to look at this, I.
Yeah.
I mean, that's just my own.
Yeah.
Feeling.
Yeah, I'm I'm thinking what we want to do from our perspective is look at. Lay lay that map out, look at the connections that are on town land, but also the other mindset we have to is, where else are there? Connections that could be made across. Town land that might be useful in the flow of that. You know, a good part of those are designations on roads. And I I would argue that, and I did say this at the last meeting, is I think this plan. Very well addresses. The on-road connectivity for bicycles. And pedestrian sidewalks. I don't think it appropriately or adequately addresses the off-road trail connections. And how they're going to be managed to be properly designed for bicycle use. Because the typical trail in town. Because the typical trail in town is not designed for bicycle use.
So I think one of the I I have to really do a deep dive in this into this plan, but. I was talking with Michael and um. I think. You know, we've we've bet around the idea of how we're gonna meet the needs of a user of a biking user group, right? That they are a user group in our town. They they are they are using our trails um. And so how are we gonna manage this? So one of the goals, and I have to look at this plan, but I feel like it should be to come up with a with a. A plan on if and how our parks are gonna be used for. For bicycling. Um, and which ones and and are we gonna have separate trails? And it's almost like this is a rec trail program ramp. Um, to kind of, we're bringing in together a bunch of different partners. We've got. Deep and Joshua's Trust and Connecticut um Forest and Parks Association and where is biking appropriate? Which parks, which trails and. What do we have? What are the standards that we need for our trails so that they're well maintained and? What's the, how are we gonna continue to maintain them? Yeah, and and that. Cause I've heard over and over in the past twenty years that people wanna bike on our trails and I say, well, then come to us with a plan. Or maintenance and I.
They never.
They've never been here, so.
And and this plant, this plant talks about building trails and connections. But all the ones they're really talking about are your classic civil engineer. Uh, multimodal stuff. They're not talking about recreational trail connections. They've got the trails on there, but they're really not addressing that. And they're not addressing the fact that there. Too. Conflicting in a way populations using the trails in Mansfield's.
Well, at least two conflicting uses.
Well, but but no, there's two convicting bicycle populations. There's the people who are local. Part of the bike community and invested in the trails. And then there are the people to come in and. Party for four years and then leave. And they're not invested in maintaining the trails or maintaining a a decent working relationship with the rest of us.
Yeah, and you also have two different. Reasons for riding. One is I won't wanna get to work a little faster than walking. And uh the other one is the recreational riding. And then there's the adventure riding almost.
I wanna go fast down hills and see if I can hit a tree.
For a person, yeah.
So at least cause a lot of erosion.
Yeah.
And and this only addresses really to get from point A to point B, not the recreational.
And that's.
But that's important.
It needs to be, it it needs to acknowledge that it's limited in that. And that further work is needed to address these other bicycle users.
Yeah.
So you think they're presenting this more as than endpoint rather than is.
I think so, yes. Cause they they allude to the twenty seven miles of bicycle trail. And they're counting State Park, the the town park trails in that mileage, but they're not really addressing how they're appropriate for bicycle use. Or what they need to do to make them appropriate.
Yeah.
Right.
And some of the stuff I've seen in Schoolhouse for Park, you wonder about the safety aspects of using.
Yes, that's.
Safety in all cases.
They're building, they're building jumps on town property without town.
Yeah.
Being.
Yeah.
Without the town even knowing they're there. What happens when somebody breaks a neck?
Or in ten years or in five years when it deteriorates.
Yeah.
I would say for this meeting, the last one was on Zoom and I had a horrible connection. I couldn't hear a thing. Lon said that group said. And my computer kept going out, so it'd be very important to meet in person to where we could really see what you're talking about.
So what what are our next steps?
Well, what do you think they like?
They wanna get this plan adopted and they want it um they want it to go, they want your. They want this committee to give them feedback. So that they can go to the planning and zoning commission and the town council and say that we've gone to the transportation advisory committee. We've gone to. The Parks and Natural Resources Committee. They are in support of this. Now, T Z C and Town Council, will you adopt this and make this the official? Bicycle master plan for the town of Mansfield.
I don't think I could vote for that if they still include those brown lines.
Yeah.
Yeah. Brown.
The brown. Brown lines are.
I I I hear, I think, so I think that's we need to tell them. Yes, they're looking for this and they're looking to you specifically to tell them. So.
Brown lines are called out as existing pedestrian facilities, just for the sake of that.
Pedestrian.
Yes, yeah. And they're called.
Bicycle.
The other thing is some kind of scoping um. You know, acknowledgement that this is not to deal with off-road bike use. You know, it's for.
Maybe they need a note on there that says, by the way, pedestrian does not mean. Maybe it needs to be called out.
Bicycle and pedestrian master plan for the town of Mansfield.
So maybe that's the wrong title. I mean, altogether, it's it's really not a master plan. It's a plan for a certain kind of bike use. And it's really not pedestrian. I mean, we we haven't even had that this time.
Right, it's for, it's simply bicycle.
But it's only a certain kind of.
Right, but I'm.
Yeah.
You know, it's not just a certain kind of bicycle. It's bicycles. That's what we're talking about here. We had no conversation about.
We did not. None, we did not. And if and if.
That's what I thought when we, that's why I didn't want to do.
And if paths are being highlighted on there in a way that is going to attract more.
Then the text is discussing it as if those are all bicycle able.
Yes, they are.
Right, so I guess one of the things is I think we need to acknowledge that. That there is gonna be bicycling in our parks and that we may wanna consider bicycling in the parks. But there has to be a system. For how that's, there has to be sep- we have to have trails. They have to be compatible with pedestrian use or they have to be separate trails. And then there has to be a a maintenance. Program for that. And we have to just have an honest conversation. Who's gonna do that?
Yeah.
And how's it gonna get funded? Because this stuff is not free and we have to be very upfront. Other thing I'm a little concerned about. Is um. These long-term planned routes. How, who's? So that's gonna be on the master plan. But how are we gonna get? Right, like for example, I live on this road and I've heard loud and clear from one of my neighbors, they don't want a sidewalk on that. Portion of our road.
Is that what the green means?
It means this is a. Step town, this is now a town designated bicycle route, but the brown dots mean that.
God, yes.
Um, it means it's long term planned. So that means it's showing on this map. That someday they want to have a side like a bike path like they do on Honeywood Road.
Go.
So how like what's the community engagement process gonna be? To make sure that the neighbors and the town as a whole feel that that's a good use of. Town property, money.
Yeah, it got approved in the master plan, so it's a done deal.
Well, that's what I don't want to have happen. Cause I haven't heard. I mean, I'm selfishly thinking about my road, but I don't I haven't heard anything about these roads either. I don't know how they feel about that.
Yeah, well, I I wasn't sure whether they wanted sidewalks on those or they just wanted them to be signed for bicyclic.
I thought they were multi-use pathways.
I think they want multi-use pathways, like they're we're.
I can't see building a pathway up Gurleyville Hill.
Fifty feet under the feathers property, that'd be all right.
So I I guess.
That would be fun.
So so I think, can we just try to um quickly? Give them feedback and then decide on what the next step they're gonna be, cause I we I.
Yeah.
Lon is very frustrated. He's been working on this for a long time. I want to, right now, he's pleased that the planning department is kind of giving him some a little bit of attention and I'm gonna continue with that because he's worked really, really hard on this.
Yeah.
And I um.
Yeah.
In the town operating budget for the maintenance and improvement of trails, walkways, bike routes, bike lanes. Like parking facilities and multi-use paths.
So I heard.
Fine item in the town budget.
Three different things so far, which is one of which is the highlighting of the. Trails in our parks and stuff that needs to be addressed exactly what it's being highlighted for in this plan. Then I heard that we need to establish exactly who's going to be funding maintenance on paths and things like that. And how we're gonna address that. And then I heard that we need to figure out how community members are going to be asked whether or not they actually. Agree to their sidewalk plans. Those are the three objections or three points of conversation that need to be reflected back to them that I've heard.
Well, some.
And and.
Yeah.
Also. The whole pedestrian piece of this. Is not on the table here.
Well, I you could definitely argue.
And guys, where are the? Plans for pedestrians?
That's a pedestrian. This, if this gets, that's gonna be a sidewalk. There's many of these that are sidewalks.
You know, right, but we have not discussed it. That's the point. All we have discussed is bicycles. So I mean, we really need a serious discussion about this. It's, we could not do that in the Zoom forum.
Okay.
Nobody's small, it's just.
Yeah, we just need, I just want.
Right, yeah. But we need to sit down with that. Or a paper copy or whatever and talk about this. I need to have any. Sensible response.
So.
Yeah, we did discuss pedestrian stuff and I would have things I'd suggest if I thought I was.
Do you want, so now you guys have this plan. You had the opportunity to at least give it a high level look. Twice. Do we wanna bring Lon and Derek back in here and have a um or do we wanna have a meeting before they come in with a big map or what do you?
I don't wanna spend, waste their time.
Yeah.
Do you wanna have a sub just cause? You know, how how do you want staff to facilitate this? Because we could.
Well. One of the things I would refer you to the uh note, the minutes from the last meeting. Where I tried to write off what we captured last time. And uh. The committee offered questions and comments, notably bullets. There was some question as to accuracy of the presented policy of town use of trails in parks by bikes. There was concern that park trails used by bikes be determined to be constructed to be safe and suitable for bike traffic with minimal ongoing maintenance. It was noted that bike and pedestrian traffic were both was both for pedestrian point A to point B. And recreation, both on roads and on park trails. And the plan focused on the transportation aspects primarily. The eastern playing fields were suggested as an additional designation destination. Cause there is a bus stop there too. Some alternatives were suggested for a few of the proposed connecting trails. We put that in the minutes.
Okay.
How much more do we need to do before they take the lead again and address what we've already said?
Okay, so so then that's the conversation we need to have with um Lon and Derek is we want, they would like. How how are you planning to address this? And maybe they should come back and find out how they. And just give you give them feedback in one, it's one more. Iteration of this plan.
I've been pretty adamant the last time and again tonight, but I don't think they heard me.
Okay, well, then we need a.
Do you wanna subcommittee meeting to meet with them quickly, faster even than the special meeting that we're going to have in June? We can schedule as many special meetings as we want, technically speaking, but. We can, not everyone has to be there. Or we can just schedule a second special meeting and we can just have a special meeting that's just about this. End of May and we can have another special meeting in June about. The early June, about the other matter.
Well, I'd like to have them give a little thought to how they might respond to these issues. Before we met.
Okay, so maybe you and I should meet with Lon.
Okay, but we we also have a regular meeting in two weeks.
Well, there is currently scheduled a regular meeting in two weeks.
Yeah, maybe that's a better way to phrase it.
And the reason why we had this meeting tonight was first completely selfish reasons, cause I'm gonna not. Be here on the sixteenth and we needed to get the science stuff.
Yeah.
And we've we've got a lot of work with these. Developments that are before the town.
I can imagine. You guys gotta be with all the stuff that's going on. You guys gotta be going crazy.
We serve the public.
It just care, it just, it just seems like it's getting piled on.
Yeah.
I just don't think that what Vicky said hasn't been captured, wasn't captured.
That we should meet and look at the map.
Well, that, but also that. This thing about the bicycles. So you should.
You mean, and we haven't talked about pedestrian?
Yeah, I mean, so it's labeled biking pedestrian and.
Plan and and we haven't really talked.
And also it's a little weird that some special interest bicycle group is making a master plan.
We're doing a Parks Recreation Master Plan, which is different than a bike pet plan, but um it is. Sort of, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, not not that what they're doing is is that.
No, it's it's important.
Are taking ownership on something that maybe.
There are areas that as a young family up there looking at the map that. Clearly to me need pedestrian walking routes along a road. That are not highlighted as having any kind of plan for that. And I can't speak for the communities in those areas and whether or not they would want that, but they seem like obvious places to have them. And it wasn't even on my mind. We're looking at this, cause I didn't see the pedestrian stuff.
Well, and we were talking about bikes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Bike Mansfield, I think was authorized.
Did everybody read this?
If I remember correctly.
Yeah.
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 So you printed out that I I couldn't get.
I printed it out, cause I need to.
Yeah, yeah.
Be able to do this.
Yeah, I read it a month ago.
Yeah.
So what do we wanna do?
So let let Jen and I get a meet with Lon and Derek to start. We have your concerns from the minutes as well as tonight.
Yeah.
To just begin that discussion on get a timetable from them. On how long they think it'll take to give you an adequate response, because. Th- these questions are complex and it will take some time. We can come back to you as a committee. And say, we think they'll be ready. They think they'll be ready at this point. Can we schedule a special meeting for that time? I know people are getting busy. It is May. The weather is getting warmer. So just very quickly. When do people know they are definitely not available? Weeks people are gone. Are you gone all summer? Yeah, okay, but most of July, that's.
Perhaps all of July.
Okay.
She says optimistically.
But I mean, I might have a connection, but it might, I might not.
It it seems like, Michael, your your plan is assuming that that they understand what we just said.
I am going to do my best job as a communicator to convey the will of the committee that I am staffed to. I have been informed that I am an effective communicator. I cannot speak, I cannot speak to the efficacy of them as listeners. But I have found working with Derek to be exceptionally amiable thus far.
Yeah.
So I think we should believe that everyone is going in with good intentions.
Yeah.
Uh, and that we can work together.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I I would point out that I think on this committee, there is not a unanimity in. How much we want bikes on the trails.
Yes, that is why I have it on the agenda.
Yeah.
But I think my point. Is I'm not opposed to bikes on trails if the trails are built for bikes.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
And who's gonna do that?
It's the one person.
And you do.
There is, there is the conflict. Of. Disrespectful riders especially. On the same trail as a pedestrian.
Yeah.
I have run into that with snowmobiles and cross-country skiers in the Mountain West.
I don't expect someone to come whizzing down the trail at my four-year-old when I'm walking down.
But that happens. We had it happen.
The other thing is um Oak Ridge and I we just realized Clover Mill Trail. Oak Ridge, I I reblessed and Clover Mill, I will rebless because you can't follow the trail from the. Bicycle hard pass. It's hard, it's hard, it's it's hard to distinguish where the hiking trail is.
And that's bad for the environment.
Yeah.
Yes.
Actually, we, there's a paved path along the Cape Cod Canal. That is pedestrian and bike trail. It has a road-like white line down the middle. It says there's signs all over the place that say, you know, walk to the right. It requests that the bicyclists. Say when they're approaching you and they can, the only time they can go in the other lane is to pass a pedestrian. And it's very clearly stated all over the place. And I think that would make. Like the the pathway up to the new school. I mean, there's gonna be bikes on that and there's gonna be pedestrians. And I think it would make. The paved bike slash pedestrian paths a whole lot safer. If walkers knew that they had to stay on one side and and bicyclists knew the rules as to what they approached.
I think the issue though is a whole lot of bicyclists don't wanna drive on a five-foot wide paved road. They wanna go barreling through the woods.
Well, you have both. You have.
So you've got to accommodate that other population, but you've got to figure out how to do it. Uh with respect for everybody.
And you've gotta have a trail that's that's wide enough to do it safely.
Yeah, the the state rules on single-track hiking trails and double-track. Multi-use trails, high old woods roads.
Yeah, that's, I think what what we would need to look at is. Is there a place, are there double-track trails that um you can have both on safely?
And that might be a place to start would be to inventory. Where the town trails are on old wood roads.
Right.
And where they are truly walking paths.
Yep.
So then we have an idea of what might be possible. Rather than you say, we're gonna bike on the towns trails.
I'll see what we got.
I I also think that that's where we need, you know, another plan, you know, we need.
More plans. We're the planning department. As long as we keep planning, you can't fire us.
So I think we, but we do need to have something to go on.
Yeah.
If we're gonna be biking in on our town parks, we have to have some sort of guidance document.
If the bikers are going to ignore it completely.
At least there's some sort of.
Say, this is what we have.
Right.
If you're outside that, you're on your own liability-wise, et cetera.
Yeah.
And interestingly, the other day I was uh Mary and I went down to a nature conservancy property in Scotland. The best trail map I could find. Was on a bike trail, biker.
Yeah.
Mountain biker type site, not the nature conservancy site.
Yeah, the 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 best, some of our best trail maps are on that bike site.
Yeah, so the fact that the trails are mapped there is essentially condoning. Even if it's not permitted.
Yep.
Their usage.
Yeah.
All right, well, we can, I could talk about this for hours. So you you folks are gonna talk with Lon and company.
So we'll 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 talk to them about your concerns. We'll bring their concerns, your concerns to them, see what they say. I'm sure they can work on at least some of these things and respond to them. If they can give us a time in which they're able to meet with you to answer some of these things and provide responses. Say, here's what we think we should do. Here's how we think we should move forward. Then we'll try to schedule a special meeting. Specifically to talk about that in person in the room, roll out all the maps. And look at it and dedicate that meeting to a powwow about this. Once that is done, right, they can go back, make some final revisions that are have to be made. And then you can endorse it if you find it satisfactory. I think it, I think specifically targeting meetings about this. Which does require more special meetings, but if you're open to it.
We've gone the last two weeks of May.
Okay. Anyone gone the first week of June? Okay, cuz we're gonna need to have the special meeting about the golf course then. You'll get your renewal, your your referral soon.
And you're you're probably gonna wanna field trip, right, to go out there and have them show you what they're.
Yeah, because the plans have changed enough. Some of us are familiar with what's up in the back area there.
But that that original field trip that we had, most of these people were not on.
Yeah, just the three of us.
Do Thursday afternoons for for people for that field trip.
First week in June, so it's confusing for Thursday cuz June first is a Thursday, so by first.
Just just thinking about, so staff, we like to schedule those during the workday because we work until six thirty. On Thursdays, we clear out the late afternoon and we're just available for that at that time.
I don't have kids.
Yep.
I will be asleep. We'll just be back the day before.
Right.
Yeah, but we.
Cuz I I normally spend most of the Thursday. But that's that's in transition right now cuz we're about ready this week for.
I'll just carry you around the site, yeah.
Okay, so you're you're saying on June first and four, we're talking about both. The golf course application and meeting with the bike people.
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry. That was the field trip. Field trip later there's our field trip. That's when we try to do those. We could.
I think.
I've served my time. Overnight conference.
Yeah, so so the plan is uh the week of June fifth, a special meeting.
I I almost think sooner rather than later for the real course. If they, if you may have suggestions where they would wanna make some changes and um you want them to.
Because we're in a public hearing. They can make the changes during a public hearing.
They can. Do it before.
Yep, then they do.
What'd you say, May what?
Tuesdays, right, this is Tuesdays.
Okay.
So if we're doing, if we're doing meetings in May, yes, I know, it's very confusing. Um so we're doing meetings in May. Uh for the special meeting about this. The twenty-third or the thirtieth.
Should be in addition.
Or you guys are gone. Well, we can cancel the sixteenth.
Okay.
So we can, we can cancel the sixteenth to give more time to review the application. We leave the sixteenth on, you can blitz it out in two weeks. Do you feel on the eighteenth thing?
I think how, it's gonna depend on how responsive they were to what we said last time. Cuz we made, we made quite a few suggestions when we had our last field trip out there. Wouldn't they hurt any of it or not is another question.
Yeah.
I wasn't here yet.
Yeah, well, the case is, okay, so once you've had a chance to look at the plans and then, you know. You can send us the link to when you get them on the uh.
Yeah.
So.
Let's do this one at a time. Field trip, eighteenth of May.
Okay.
Four P M.
Got it.
Okay.
Twenty-third.
If we do the twenty-third, the Harringtons cannot be there.
Okay, I'm also on the.
And you're also out of the twenty-third. Thirtieth, can you be there, Jim?
Yeah, that would work.
No.
We come back to thirty-first.
Cuz others are pushing to the sixth and that's just a long time.
Guys are such that you could never meet someday other than Tuesday.
We can. It's just that we tend to find that that makes everything more complicated. Because people tend to have the same night of the week clear.
Let's just, I mean, for for giggles. We we could. I didn't bring my phone, which is, okay, so but. When are you guys leaving?
Leaving the seventeen.
Seventeen.
Back to thirty-first.
That's a nice trip we're having.
Carolina coast and then great Smoky Mountains.
Could we have a field trip next week? I mean, you know, why? I guess we have to talk to the.
No, we they they'll, they can do it.
Someone will be there. We could do the eleventh. Okay.
And then have a meeting on the um.
We just have our scheduled meetings, but the agenda is limited. The eleven is the field trip at four P M onsite.
So you can, I I might not.
I would maybe be able to do four P M, but I'm single parenting it next week, so there is no way.
So would not everyone will be able to do everything.
Absolutely fine.
Okay. Julie, does that work for you those days?
I don't know. It depends on on interviews. We're doing some hiring, so it just depends when people come in.
Okay, let let us know. We'll be happy to have you if you can make.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna have a May sixteenth meeting.
We're not canceling that, which is great.
About the golf course.
Yes.
And do we wanna try to talk talk about the bikes?
I will, since it's a regular meeting. If they can make that, if Lon and Derek can make that work, we could invite them. Two items on an agenda is not too bad. And I can just not put it on the agenda if it's not gonna. So definitely golf course, maybe bike. This is fast turnaround we can do.
And again, when is the public hearing deadline, June twenty?
June twentieth is the public hearing. Okay, scheduling.
So, I'm looking ahead here, what else?
Old business.
Yeah, I'm looking through old business.
These in three minutes if you want.
Yeah.
Okay, um master plan update. Um next week, the one hundred and ten percent, which is the company that we're working with, is coming to do the ADA audits. Of everything, including all of the parks. We're gonna find out if and which parks are ADA accessible and in which ways. It's gonna be a very interesting report to read. Um that's mostly where we are. Uh we just talked about the bike plan, uh the four thirteen twenty twenty-three sidewalk. Does anybody wanna talk about this sidewalk? Do you have any thoughts, Jim? That was the tree farm.
Christmas tree.
Yeah.
Any thoughts at all?
Yeah, well, I think the the one concern, the the one thing from those sites is connecting to with Discovery Drive.
Just remember though, these are under wetlands and when they have a special permit, you're you're gonna have.
Yeah, yeah, this is. The pond that's down there in Cedar Swamp Brook. And I neglected to walk down there to see what it's really like, but I think that's a fairly. A fairly solid uh wildlife resource just because it's part of the corridor. You know.
We're getting a review back from Wintec on this.
Yeah, so there.
I think we can talk about this when it gets.
I I think the the issue would be, I I think on any of these, the only thing we can get on some of these. And and it's fraught with difficulty in wetlands crossings is the. Ability to develop some of the backlands with loop trails for people to walk their dogs, basically. Um there was some mention, uh it would be interesting to explore the ability to connect. From the back of the tree farm. Along the power line corridor to the standard. When we were at the standard, I looked at it from that direction and. There were some real difficulty in the middle with all the wetland. But especially if we're gonna have. Stuff in both places, maybe it's time to revisit the potential for that connection to be established.
The uh resource is gonna be clearing um that hole under brush very, very soon. And I got a call at resource again. I've been playing phone tag with them to talk about when they're gonna do that. Because they're gonna sequence it at the same time as we're doing a whole bunch of big projects and I wanted to not put an enormous amount of silt into the wetland.
Yeah, so. Yeah, but there's a really only one spot that's a challenge for the crossing and that pond there. But a lot of that where the uh power line is, is an established uh road. And and the one penetration into that, as I saw it, is um. Mansfield Professional Park and the Mansfield Family Practice. And I'm just guessing the nature of their business, they could encourage be in favor of having people exercise.
It it all depends on whatever source wants people to do underneath their power lines. Um ultimately, so.
Well, I and I, but I think especially since they've already got a two-track. Maintenance track. And there's something that was brought up at the bike trail meeting last week. They were talking about. Trying, it's some town in the valley leveraged bike trails along a power line.
Oh, yeah.
And this is the perfect example and it would allow people from the standard, if we could get a bike trail. From the standard to the back of the tree farm and then through the tree farm property to Discovery Drive. We've got a different path than bringing everybody along one ninety-five.
Actually, the the Discovery Drive path would line up with the Mansfield Professional Park.
Yeah, exactly.
There'd be a light there too.
There is, there is a light.
Well, you put a roundabout in.
All right. This brings our program, so we we um our our summer brochure is all done. Um uh our autumn brochure, we will be uh coming up with ideas for if you have things you wanna do in the autumn, let me know sooner.
Um Michael and Catherine Carpenter and we um had forwarded out her an introductory email. Um Catherine is the new um rec supervisor over at the news center and she's, we're migrating. We're we're gonna like, if you have an idea, we're just gonna say, hey, you're gonna.
I have not gotten any Walktober stuff yet. Have you seen any Walktober stuff? Because usually I start getting Walktober stuff in January.
The um.
Been on their website.
I I I haven't gone in search of because I wasn't thinking fall yet, but usually we've gotten that by now. And I've I've already come up with dates and things which I haven't done because I haven't heard from them.
What's the first deadline for fall ideas?
It's pinned on my bulletin board. I'll walk down for them before you leave tonight and I'll I'll tell you. It's pinned on my bulletin board. I'll walk down for them before you leave tonight and I'll, I'll tell you.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you, Jim.
Okay, the, the one thing that, um, there is in the current brochure, a walk, I think sometime in June in, uh, Sommelberg Preserve with a leader to be determined.
It's Michael Source.
Is it?
Yeah.
Right, and, and why could something be published with a leader to be determined? You already knew the leader.
Later and it was a mistake.
Okay.
So, cuz I thought, this does not sound like something Jennifer would do.
It was a mistake, I think, uh, there's, yeah.
Yeah.
Things have happened this year.
Yeah.
I know, just a few.
Did they tell you what you were getting in court when you showed up?
Would you believe if I told you that this is more peaceful than where I was? Um, we're live, so I don't wanna say anything bad about anyone, um, anyway, no communications, there are no other communications, that was through my report.
We have an. Okay, I, I do have something that I, it's, it's a quickie thing, but, um, at Mira Meadow.
Yeah.
They, um, redid the two benches at the beginning of the trail. But they took out the bench at the far end of the meadow.
Yeah.
And I thought that maybe they were gonna fix it and put it back, but now they've graded it and put seeds there. Now, there are a lot of very, very elderly people that can't do that trail if they don't have a bench down.
Can you send us an email?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, it's sent Michael an email.
Okay.
Cuz it, it's like so many things.
Yeah, yeah, I, but.
Yeah, no.
I, I, I just think that's a critical thing there because at least three of our, cuz we're there every day now, so there are, there's like a ninety-four year old woman that, that does the loop.
Oh.
Like five or six times a day, but she can't do the loop if she doesn't have a place to rest halfway through it.
Yeah, it might be, might be worth seeing a couple more benches.
Yeah, I, 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 I think they ought to take that off, yeah.
Yeah.
But, um, yeah, it be, it was getting pushed out of the ground and I thought maybe they were just gonna fix it and put it back, but now I don't think that that's on their mind because I say.
Send us an email.
Yeah, I will. Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Um, the connection between Monticello and Felling.
We're making progress.
Maybe, I mean, less, I haven't done a single thing because the weather has been miserable, yeah.
Do you need more aluminum nails? We have more aluminum nails.
No.
What's been accomplished is the two connections in, there's a loop trail in there. We've marked the two connections in to connect to the loop trail and now we have to designate the loop trail.
Put signs up.
Yeah, and, no.
Do you need signs? I got more signs.
I have signs, I have the nails, but I do not have is the willpower to make it across the road in the pouring, right?
Yes.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah.
And we were gonna post a sign as you leave the town property, one of the, leaving town property, no trespassing. Although I'm sure people are gonna ignore it, but, uh, we did our part.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so.
Um, I do encourage you all to, to, to continue to check the story map as well as, um, we're gonna be, um, embarking on the Northwest Mansfield, um, neighborhood plan. Um, so if you go to.
The, the what?
What is Northwest Mansfield Neighborhood Plan? So that's one of our, um, our, but um, there, the concern was that neighborhood is one of the neighborhoods that has been destabilized by a lot of student housing.
So it's not like the Northwest quadrant?
No, it's more, it's more.
Linwood.
Linwood, yes, and then, um, and with the, with the, um, the lack of a civic presence now with Goodwin Elementary closing. And the fact that we have affordable housing, we have senior housing, we have sidewalks, we've got student housing, we've got single-family homes. Um, we've got, it's, you know, one of the most walkable neighborhoods in our town, so it, so we have hired a consultant, um, at H I Studio to be working on that. We're also doing, um, community outreach regarding the, um, it facilities master plan. So we, we've done a facilities master plan to do and to look at the senior center, to look at the public works garage, to look at the two schools that have closed to determine what we're gonna be doing, that you will be getting info- information, um, from Civic Brand who's doing, who is working on the, um, the Parks and Rec Master Plan. Everything that we're doing in terms of planning comes under the umbrella of MansfieldTomorrow.org. So if you go to MansfieldTomorrow.org, you will see Parks and Rec Master Plan. Pretty soon you're gonna see Northwest, um, Mansfield Plan, Facilities Master Plan. And then starting in the fall, believe it or not, we're going out for an R P for our new P O C D. So, um.
But it's just an update. How far east does Northwest Mansfield go?
So, you know, we, the exact location needs to really be defined, but we're, I mean, Northwest Mansfield is a, is a big area, obviously. But it's sort of in north of, um, two seventy-five, hitting the, the Linwood Separatist Road. And then west of one ninety-five, but you know, that Timber Drive Cedar Swamp area is, is, a lot of the things that come from that, like preserving our single-family neighborhoods will be applicable to those neighborhoods, as, as well as some other areas in town, but, um, so that's, those are things that are coming down.
So that's mostly the area that, that we, we were, we were discussing.
It's gonna be, we have to really define like the.
Yeah, yeah, if you use three twenty, you can pick up Timber Drive.
Yeah. So those are some other.
Just, just a few things to keep me off the streets.
That's such a boring job.
There's nothing.
Since you mentioned Goodwin School.
Yeah.
Something that I kind of, you know, I'm drowning in the back of my head the last few days that I was stopping there and looking at the surface and what was there. And knowing the history in a couple of other towns of schools that closed and what they did with some of the spaces and you know, from day zero, I've always thought that Mansfield really needed a nature center.
Yeah.
Um, the rooms at the end of the hallway in Goodwin right outside the door, there's a greenhouse, right behind that, there's a little trail in the woods.
So you're gonna have the opportunity to weigh in on that.
So anyway, it's, it's kind of rattling around in the back of my mind that if they're looking for ideas or uses, um, cuz there's shelter falls and there's the. Native trails. Maybe we can, I will.
Nice, nice.
Because Weathers, Weathers Field started their nature center in, it's an abandoned school and now they have a nice big, you know. But they built up to a.
Back of it.
Oh.
Vinton actually has a pond and.
Yes, yeah, and then, well, Vinton also had My Turtle Island, which I love and adore and I always thought that would be a cute nature center. The woods are not as.
A second, opposed. Okay, instructs. Thank you, Julian.
Bye, Julian.